I think it's close enough. I'm going to call this meeting of prior township trusties to order for business work.
United States of America into the brother protestants, one nation underground industrial like we're going to just strong.
For you as a set of minutes of the regular session. I'll just cover the sixteen or four motion for word.
I'll make that motion.
Second vote, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And also recognize just for everyone with the Bengals Brown and deal with one of them. I'm sorry, Kansas City want to, okay, apologize.
Did they come and play Bill McCallum? Oh, no, they were in Germany.
Everybody else's teeth picture shut out. Public comment period.
Our meeting is actually tomorrow night, so. I had more of a recap.
Worthington Hills. The Summit Magazine was coming back. Called something else, what do we call it, where it's on it?
I can't remember.
We, we met with the. Public here editor of November, so they're going to give a presentation at Pacific Association meeting tomorrow night. And we had committed to picking up where we left off with the Summit Magazine having an article, I should say. We committed Luke. Putting in an article once a month to the magazine, so. If the road department zoning or fire or please want to. Think about what you'd like to add to that. I'm sure people appreciate the suggestions. Other than that, I think that they have a. Fall event coming up, correct? The Civic Association, we have a movie night. When is that? Or was it? Was it the third? That's wrong.
I don't have it in here.
Okay.
Call stroll magazine.
Stroll magazine. Anything down at F one or V? Anything with Rose? Down there?
Working on finishing up the punch list with the county and that call basically. For those who are dedicated. On public. Works at another meeting, Jim Owen, taking Rose and Vallow.
Okay.
They've got quite a bit to do.
Okay. Rose. We're going to move the agenda around a little bit for scheduling purposes. And Dave Rose is with us to give us an overview on the staffing study that I know we kind of touched on. But then get into some detail and then I'm sure the board will have questions after your presentation.
Actually, hopefully we've left him a question, that'll be good. So this is a bit about me up on the board. So we are a waypoint safety consulting, my business partner and I are one of our energy partners. And my career, most of my career has been in law enforcement. If you count law enforcement, EMS and fire. About thirty-five years of experience is pretty much my whole involvement. I, I was really fortunate to work for Ohio State University and they provided, they provided me with. Make total somewhere around three thousand hours of training and a couple of degrees along the way. And so it was just a great place to learn and it was also a really unique environment when it comes to staffing especially because. At OSU, when I left there, I think it was around, we were tracking only events that, that had a thousand attendees or more. So this isn't even the normal patrol staffing. I think they're around seventy police officers now. But we had more than a million visitors to those events every year. And so it meant that you're constantly working through staffing. So I was taught to do staffing from a, from, you know, a managerial training perspective, but then had many, many years of actual staffing experience. I retired from the university in two thousand twenty and I'm now the safety director and police chief at Denison University. And I was really hired there to modernize their office. And so this kind of work is, is what we do. And then my business partner and I have been doing this for a few years now and it's. The goal was to give back something to central Ohio police. And, and fire any public safety and it's hopefully to make best practice more accessible. We recognize that the kinds of things we do, in particular the price point we're doing them makes them. Makes our services much more accessible to small departments and that was kind of the goal. So the, the patrol study that we were. Engaged to do here is really meant to be a workload analysis and it's kind of the best practice. And we'll talk about different ways to figure out police staffing. But it also was to include the unique context here. And I can't say this enough, context is so important when you think about staffing. So there are a bunch of different ways to. Figure out numbers. And if, if you think about different departments, for example, if you had a small community in Wyoming, but it's spread out over hundreds square miles. Then the same population might, in a, in a much smaller area, might need less police officers, for example. So, so geography and all these other things play a role. So we were also requested to take a look at the command staff structure and just see if we had any recommendations. And also a review of the existing police positions, specifically the full, full-time versus part-time. And if there was a need for additional staffing or. You know, if you do a workload analysis, there's always the chance that it comes out that you need less staffing as you have. Because workload is what it is. Then to evaluate that from a full-time versus part-time and then of course present that in a final written report, which will begin in the coming weeks. So. I mentioned that there's these different methods. One of them that, that is often cited is officer to population ratio. And you'll see that even the FBI reports, so you may say, maybe you may see one police officer for every two thousand residents, something like that. The difficulty with that type of staffing method is it assumes that the calls. That are experienced in each community are, are the same, that they're the same in terms of priority level or severity. And also like a number of calls per population are. Are kind of consistent, so if you think about it, at least in Franklin County, if you were to compare the call volume here versus the call volume in Clinton Township. It's a very, very different thing, even though the population may not really be that different. So officer to population ratio doesn't fit well. Minimum staffing model, that's often contractual, so you may see a contract where it says that you'll have five police officers on duty per shift. Which again, you know, when you, when you think about. Christmas Eve at OSU, for example, a lot of the students have gone home and so unlike a lot of traditional police departments. Call volume on Christmas Eve is really, really low. And so to say that you need the same number on Christmas Eve as you need on a Friday night, for example, during a football game. You can see the problems with that. And then the last one's authorized strength and that's, that's the one where you usually hear that a police department will be authorized by their, their appointing authority. So the trustees, for example, the township could say you have an authorized strength of twelve or whatever that is. But these numbers, again, they just tend to be a bit on the arbitrary side and they're governed, governed more by tradition than by the workload. So this workload analysis is really meant to be the best practice. Look at all the things you do, decide what's really important to keep doing and then right size it to make sure that you have some time. For proactive policing and all of the other work that's required to run a successful police agency. And if you look at the published methods for this and, and. Honestly, you're starting to get a little bit old. They recognize the importance of context and so that's, that's a super important feature. So when I think about critical context, one of the things that we determined as we came through and kind of had our interviews and that sort of thing is that you have. A really large geographic footprint compared to the actual township here. If the township area is somewhere around two and a half, four miles. And if you look at the area bounded by roughly Summit View. And Henderson Road on the south, not even all the way down to Lane Avenue and then the east and west boundaries, it's something like twenty square miles. I mean, it's, so it's the islands kind of scattered in that area. The other part is you have a small agency size, but you also have this dense urban environment. And so there's a significant impact on response times and also. What's a little unusual here is that more of your call types need to be offices. We'll talk about this more later, but an example of that would be that. A non-injury traffic crash for most police departments. Would often be a single officer call whether you go and take a report, but here because of the roadways that you have. If the vehicles are blocking or there's any chances of blocking, then it takes more staff to manage that just because of the sheer volume of traffic. And then the other thing is the potential impact of regional development and I, I don't know how much the intel project is on your radar. I know it's a little ways from here, but there's going to be an entire regional impact, you know, so we'll talk a little bit about. So I pulled this from, it's a two thousand eighteen Sawmill Road corridor study, so this is before the intel project. But I just want to pull a few numbers from this, if you look at the Sawmill Road northbound in two thousand twenty. So north of Hard Road, actually north of I two seventy up to Hard Road, that's thirty-six thousand cars. In an average daily time traveling through that corridor. And so it's just tens of thousands of vehicles that are passing through here. I think anybody that's tried to turn right out of the parking lot out here during rush hour knows. That the traffic is extreme and so that affects the ability to respond. The other thing is regional development. And so I've, I've always pointed people back to this presentation called Intel on Intel. It's on YouTube, it's by Betsy Goldenstein, she was with the MA Design Week, I think she's since spun off on her own consults at this journal. But. What Intel is saying is that for every job they create, they create thirteen more. And so this first twenty billion dollar investment, which by the way, the history of Ponder's in that in Ohio is eleven billion dollars. So the first twenty billion dollars is anticipated to make three thousand jobs for intel. And so that means as many as forty thousand jobs-ish right in that area. Total for that first development and they've got enough space out there to, to multiply that by four. And so we're really taking a hard look at this, in, in Licking County, there's about a hundred and eighty thousand people. And if they create a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand jobs, I mean, that's going to have such a significant impact. And it, that's, it's like hard to wrap your mind around those numbers, right? But if you look at intel in Chandler, Arizona, they started in nineteen eighty, the population in Chandler was thirty thousand, the current population is two hundred and eighty. Their police department's roughly ten times what it was back then and Hillsboro, Oregon, the same thing. And you know, in Chandler, they have six fab plants now, they're talking about eight fab plants in Licking County inside of ten years. So the, the impact is going to be significant. The other thing that's really significant to know for your purposes is that the communities in Licking County, for the most part, have not embraced multifamily homes. So I think Heath is doing some current annexation to build some of those properties. But in Granville Township, you have to have five acres to build a single family home. The west side of Licking County, the west Licking County Association, it's two, two acres and that's outside of those city boundaries. None of the cities have embraced multifamily housing and so. The consultants I've talked to out there that do city original planning, they're saying that a lot of this early. Transition, the population is going to probably be living in counties around Licking County to start with. And so it means there's going to be an impact if nothing else from the traffic perspective. The other challenge for Ohio, in my opinion, is that if you see that kind of growth. You're probably talking about one to two generations to catch up from a road and public service perspective because taxes are in arrears, right? And so you can't hire cops until the tax base is here and so it's really important. The other thing is that the, the property value out there in Betsy's presentation. She shows the neighborhood immediately around their intel plant and the average home price in Chandler is about eight hundred thousand dollars. And so it just makes the area immediately around there, you know, unaffordable in some cases and so it pushes people to the outer areas. So this is that boundary, two and a half square miles, so you can see Summit View, like just that island effect, you're all familiar with this. So when we talk about the activity. We had to, we created these buckets for how to refer to these, you have reactive work and reactive work, when you think about synchronous reactive work, what we're talking about is. In the moment when somebody picks up a telephone and calls nine one or calls the non-emergency number and says, I need a police officer because I have an accident, I call them. Asynchronous work, this is something why I say the police staffing studies are, are starting to be outdated is because. There's so much now that comes to us through other means, like. You police chief told us that they get complaints about different things that happen, but they may come in through anonymous reporting lines. And they come in through email, you know, tip lines, things like that. We're all getting those at different agencies. And they trigger things like, let's say someone complains about significant traffic violations around a new construction site. And then your police chief says, okay, well during that time of day for the next two weeks, I want to check that time. So. That's really asynchronous request for service and it's one request now may trigger more than one call. So the notion of calls for service using a telephone is just outdated. Then the other thing is responsive work and this is something that is what you see in a really proactive police department. In a high, kind of a high service environment. And so you have a tremendous number of residents and business checks that are being performed by the police departments, they keep themselves busy. Right? And we'll talk about the importance of those, so now you have to start thinking about, how do you carve out how much time they have to have? Versus how they use the free time they have available. The other things they do is they have investigations like any other police department, they have a court function. So somebody has to go to the court to pick up warrants, drop off charges and all of these things that happen. And then of course with higher service departments, you have community engagement that happens as well. The other part that you need still is uncommitted patrol time. If you don't have uncommitted patrol time, then it means that there's a crime trend of any kind, then you don't have the time to commit to that, you're just responding. Or you can take away time from the asynchronous or responsive work you're doing, so that's the balance, right? And then the last thing is the non-enforcement work related to running a police department, training, court interaction, supervision. Equipment preparation, maintenance, so police officers don't just come in and they're not immediately in a car, they might have to gather equipment, they might have roll call training you have to do. I have to say, your, your police department is an excellent department and provides a good deal of training to their staff. I mean, we, we see the news, right? And so not providing training is, is its own issue all by itself. But they, they do a really good job of that. Ship briefing, non-response drive time is another thing that just takes up the bucket of time and even for that matter, the officer eating lunch in the middle of the day. That's something not part of that reactive or responsive work. So we go through all of that and quantify it. So our methods, we talked about this through an onsite interview, we've been back a couple of times for clarification, additional data. And then we had to pick CAD data or computer aided dispatch data. The most appropriate was from March last year through the end of February. And it's because of the switch the police department made to a new computer aided dispatch system at that time. And we also had to determine the workload of current staff, we tend to use calendar years for that just because it's a little easier. It's, it's definitely representative of current staff need patterns, as long as you use a full calendar. And then we try to define a patrol full-time equivalent average. So converting from people to, to FTEs, how much time does the average patrol officer spend on the street? Then that tells you how many people you have working for you when we factor in part-time and also committed. Patrol time by supervisors and things like that. So let's see. Okay. So when we look at traditional calls, this is, this is a much smaller number, but just as an important piece of this, when you look at eighty percent of those traditional calls, this is what you're seeing. And so it does tell you that traffic is a pretty significant issue for the police department here. But a lot of these calls that you're seeing here require two officers to go to those, so we have to factor that in as well, that. Amount of time for two people to respond instead of one. And when you think about response calls, one officer calls versus two. The good news here is Perry Township, even though you're in a really. Urban environment, it's safe and there's not a lot of extreme calls for service like shootings and stabbing and things like that, although those calls are part of their, their workload, but it's a much smaller number. So seventeen percent of those two officer calls. And then if you look at traffic crashes, I just thought you might be interested in seeing hundred and five injury crashes, a hundred and ninety, so they're dealing with about three hundred crashes. And again, it's a pretty small workforce for the police department. And so now here's the important part, when we talk about that responsive part, which is the house checks and residence checks. If you look in the middle, this is a lot to look at, but. Three hundred and forty-one, you see that small number in that patrol area, those are those triggered, somebody asked for service and they ended up assigning staff to go back on repetitive basis. And so you ask yourself, can we balance the need for staffing by doing, there's probably three ways you can address time, right? You can do less things, you can do them more efficiently, you can add staff. And so that's part of our balance when we look at this. And so three hundred and forty-one checks, but this is just Worthington Hills and so you look at the other things that happened there. Fourteen auto accident, non-injury, two domestic violence calls. You know, a number of other calls, two suicide attempts, six suspicious persons, five suspicious persons have caused, so it's kind of a regular occurrence. And so now you ask yourself, should we really take away? Three hundred and forty-one times where the police department chose to make themselves present in that community and what does that do then? To that, to that number of, of events. So we created this model and this is kind of a blending of a model from the International Association of Chiefs of Police, it was published in their, their publication probably forty years ago. Where you kind of divide things up into three buckets of time and so we looked at those reactive and responsive calls as one bucket of time that you want to keep all of. The next one's the non-enforcement, enforcement work and that's everything from lunch break, the on-shift training and then the last, it's uncommitted patrol time. And so if we add up all of the times for calls for service. We can, we can basically multiply it by three and that's the pool within the. So our current staffing. If you have, we have full-time, you have the chief, patrol lieutenant, three sergeants, eight officers, part-time, you have the administrative lieutenant and sergeant, made officers. Not all part-time officers are created equal, you have a couple that work quite a bit more hours, but they're doing things that are not focused specifically on patrol, like. One is managing almost all of your investigations, which has to be done. And so they're using a good resource with that officer and his capabilities. But if you convert this to full-time equivalents, then it comes out to about eleven point six full-time equivalents. That's the number. So the average, for example, your average part-time officer is just over one quarter of one full-time officer. Based on how much time they're spending on patrol. We mentioned that we are taking a look at the command staff, so this is the organizational chart.
I'm sorry, can I?
Yes, please.
Real quick, let me go back to the other five, so in other words, this full-time equivalent that you're speaking of. Are we addressing patrol at that point?
Patrol, specifically patrol.
Okay.
So this is eleven point six. And we'll get to the number a little later, but it's, you know, there's really no such thing as a two thousand eighty hour full-time employee.
Right.
Because everybody gets vacation weeks, sick weeks, things like that. The national average. Across the workforce is something like seventeen hundred hours and it's a little lower in law enforcement because you have the training requirements and things like that that pull people away from patrol. Here the number, the magic number was one thousand six hundred and ten, so one FTE is one thousand six hundred and ten. That makes sense. And so that means we can then lump together part-time, full-time.
Okay.
That sort of thing and figure out, and I'll show you a breakdown of that more here in a minute, so that was really interesting diving into numbers. So just real quickly, in the interest of time, the command staff. We can always recommend different ways to do things, but I, I don't know that we can offer necessarily a better way. The main thing we were interested in seeing is that there's not a span of control issue either from personnel or from. From the work chart by function. And so if you look at like the national incident management system, they'll tell you the one supervisor should be supervising more than six people, ballpark. And so we go back, you know, you have very specific intentional supervision for personnel working in the street, that's. So it's, it looks like you have a correct inner statement.
If I give you my director's number, you can call her and tell her that I can only supervise.
Direct.
Direct report, yeah.
Direct reports?
Yeah.
And you think about, from the police perspective though, you think about the liability of what they're doing, right?
Yes.
And it's, it's really important to have supervisory attention. All right, so back to that workload assessment, so you have eleven point six full-time equivalents available. And if we calculate out the number of hours based on the amount of time you spend on all that reactive responsive work times three, it comes out to thirteen point six full-time equivalents required. And so if you look at the way that breaks down, you have two part-time officers plus. The chief and patrol lieutenant who are not directly contributing because of all the administrative things they have to do to manage the agency. You have eight full-time officers, they all count as one FTE each. Lieutenant Forsyth, he spends part of his time on administrative work and part of his time on patrol work, but he's still a part-time officer, but he still counts based on the number of hours he needs. He's counting as, as point four. You have your sergeants. And then also your other part-time sergeant and officers and this is how all of that adds up. There'll be a more detailed breakdown of this in the original report when that comes along, but that's where the number is. And so if you look at the current workload, another thing we can tell is. If a third of the time on your workload is what you're supposed to be spending on those, on that reactive responsive work. Then we know from the amount of staff you have that you're over forty percent right now. And it doesn't sound like a whole lot more, but if you break it down on the average hour, it leaves you something like sixteen minutes. In that ballpark that's available and one of the things we know from the data is that because of the geography here. The response time for officers on non-emergency calls is fifteen, almost fifteen months, so it's fairly long, but it's because of the amount of time they travel. And so what that means then is if you have limited, a limited amount of uncommitted patrol time and there's something going on, they probably don't have the drive time to get those. To focus on the issue. And of course, they can always rearrange the balance of reactive responsive time, but it means giving up. It means that during peak times, you're going to have no time for uncommitted patrol time without decreasing order services. And so our findings, what we recommend is add two full-time officers. Command structure, no need for changes at this point, I mean, if there's an interest in us looking closer at, you know, the types of things you're doing and. You know, click and strength, for example, we can do that, but we didn't dive into that at this point. And then we also talked about this full-time versus part-time and there's a challenge here. Because if you break down those hours again, assuming that every part-timer is a point two seven FTE, it means that you, you need eight part-time people to fill that gap. You don't want to hire every person that applies and so even if you hire one in five, which is a really scary number to me, by the way. Because of background checks and things like that, it means you need forty applicants, the, the pool is not there. I mean, you just won't be able to find that kind of, everybody is having trouble right now hiring and that's going to get worse as communities are looking for more, as intel develops. The other thing that you have, you have good part-time staff here, but you do have to recognize. That all of them, for the most part, have full-time jobs. They don't want court time to have to go to court and miss work. So it makes, whether they, whether they even are cognizant of the fact or not, it makes them reluctant to sign charges, take tickets, things like that, that you need police officers to do sometimes. The other thing is. The cost to existing personnel, if you have to hire eight people, each police background, most agencies spend four to six weeks doing background. You, you have to background check more than the number of ones you're hiring. And so it's like, it's, it's a whole thing on its own. That becomes really problematic, you have a lot of turnover, the fiscal cost of equipment purchases, I mean, if you're buying firearms. Ballistic vests are really expensive and they often don't fit the next can. ballistic vests are really expensive and they often don't fit the next cabinet. Um, and so it can be really expensive. And then the last thing is lengthy training time. Depending on how long the training time is, Mike, how long did you say that was? How many weeks? Uh, FTE?
Nine weeks.
Nine weeks. So nine weeks, you know, all those hours, and if somebody's only working four hundred and twenty-seven hours you know, a year, it takes forever to get them through. The other thing I would say, and I say this from experience, I was a police officer for eight years on patrol before I started being promoted as a command staff member. And, you know, I fully understand the laws around O B O, but the process of actually doing it, you lose those things, right? They're, they're a muscle that you have to flex once in a while in terms of just muscle memory to be able to do all of those patrol skills. And so when you retire, for example, you may, you may have a really skilled officer that comes on in retirement. But if they worked four hundred hours a year, five years from now, they're not going to be the same police officer. And so just from a liability standpoint, in terms of training, that's a challenge, and I mentioned trying to. So that's a lot in a very short time, and now questions, you have to have a lot.
Okay, I, I, for the last, obviously, I've given tons of information on intel and stuff like that. I don't see how that really impacts very much. We're, we're essentially landlines, we're not adding any new, you know, neighborhoods. So I don't think, I don't think it really impacts us at all. Would you agree on that?
I, I think it's going to impact the whole regi- region in ways that are wildly unpredictable. Because they may not move into Perry Township, so if they only have thirty thousand cars a day driving up and down Solman Road, if they, if they move into Delaware County, if they move into Dublin, they're going to be passing through the jurisdiction and it's like.
I know it's a lot, but then people tell me, you know, put it in perspective. You know, like places like OSU have, you know, thirty thousand people, ten times that, oh, they wouldn't even crack the top twenty in central Ohio with employment. So in some respects, it's a, it's a bit of a drop in the bucket compared to the whole place. And I know some people, I know a lot of people in the real estate business, and, you know, so they're primed a plane and positioned themselves for, you know, their, and their whole thing is, you're going to get probably a younger demographic working there. They're not going to want to live in New Orleans, United Area, I agree, but they're going to want to live more downtown Columbus and the short north areas. So they expect that to be sort of the opposite commute for a lot of people who live in, you know, lives out in that area coming to Columbus, and you're just the opposite, they're going to want to live in Columbus to go there. I just don't see how that's going to impact us that much.
May, may, so Jim, if you're interested, I'm bringing Betsy into our office on Thursday at four o'clock to do her intel. I've heard it, you need to, you need to listen to it for itself because you will walk away going, holy crap.
Yeah.
It's going to affect us.
It's.
It is, it's, it's really, really mind-boggling. Uh, the impact in intel, like she, the biggest one that she did was she overlaid Chandler
Mm-hmm.
on top of, the freeway said, she overlaid Chandler on top of where the intel was going to go. And you see the impact, it's like a whole nother city in Columbus. So drive times, like they're, they're willing to drive, so it's going to impact. Uh, I mean, because we're not that far, you know, you think, oh my God, we're so far away, we're not far away.
I work in Grand, I live in Dublin, right? We're already commuting. And so if you look at the Chandler, Arizona, another thing she does is overlays over Columbus and scale the Chandler.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
There's a real conversation that's been out there, it's been, you know, shouted down at this point, but it's, I mean, at some point, if there's enough traffic, they've been talking about a second hour.
Well, I know that, because I, I used to live outside of Chandler. Oh, Chandler's exploded though for
Right.
way more reasons than intel.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and again, that's not even in their top ten employers. So it's a, and, and plus you're in that whole Phoenix area, which is exploding, you know, in growth compared to Columbus. I know it's maybe big, but, you know, when I talk to, you know, people like at the Casto, who, who, you know, have people analyzing, well, how many pe- people are going to have to live and all that, and where are they going to live? It's going to be big, but it's not going to, it's not going to be like Columbus. Feel like a fifty percent bigger city or twenty percent bigger city.
If they, you know, again, they've, they've talked about as many as five um, plants, I'm sorry, ten plants out there, right? If that's the case, forty thousand, you know, even if it's on the low end, the tech industry creates five point seven jobs per every, per every one created by a company. And so, I mean, you could be talking about two hundred thousand jobs, and that's not people, that's jobs, right? Families come along with that. And so there's only a hundred and seventy-eight thousand people in Lincoln County. And if they're not going to start building homes out there, where, where are two hundred thousand people going to live? This is a really good ques- question for Betsy, by the way, at the time, is what's the timeframe for this kind of expansion? And you're absolutely right, Chandler is outside of Phoenix, but Hillsborough is not quite that.
No, I think about that.
Right? And again, it's, they started with fifteen thousand people roughly in nineteen seventy. The intel plant comes along in nineteen seventy-six, nineteen eighty, their census was twenty-seven thousand, so nearly doubled. And now they're sitting at over a hundred and five compared to fifteen. You know, now this is a really long period of time, but we're talking about compressing what they've done with those sites into ten years.
Right.
And so what does that mean? I mean, it's hard to say, but what I will say is starting a little bit early to think about right sizing the police department, to make sure it's right sized right now, so that if there's competition, we need resources, resources, we're better positioned.
Yeah, certainly not.
Real quick, what do you have the population of Perry Township at?
Um, I think it was forty-five hundred ballpark.
Right.
It's right around.
I know, I know you were supposed to gain some people back potentially from some neighborhoods and.
Well, it's about, you know, four thousand forty-five hundred by two and a half square miles, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So density wise, is that, is that considered urban?
Well, but it's not, I mean, how many people live? If you draw just a big box around the area, they're patrolling, because they have to wade through those people to get where they're going, right? And so it was very much like when I was at OSU, we had fifteen thousand students that lived on campus, but there's sixty-five thousand students, thirty thousand faculty and staff, which is higher than, actually, it's higher than that now. And plus the daily visitors to the hospital, it was more than a hundred thousand people there during the daytime. And also, if you count the passenger traffic, every car that goes through that just cuts through the area is a trap, could be a traffic violator. It could be another traffic crash, and it also will bring countless stories about people just riding the bus to get to you to commit crimes, right? You probably don't have that similar problem, but.
We, because we always consider ourselves basically sort of the classic suburban community.
Yeah.
With, uh, you know, probably ninety percent of our homes on a third acre lawn. You know, which is, which is not too dense even by suburban standards.
Right.
And, and you're right, Jim, I mean, certainly we are, but if you, if Columbus keeps throwing apartment buildings up across one sixty-one, for example, all of those people, all of that extra traffic on one sixty-one, that, that then is going to cut through the neighborhood, that then our officers are going to have to wade through to get to Worthington Hill. I mean, I think whether it's intel specific, I'm not an expert on intel.
Right.
Or it's just the growth and the design and the very clear direction from City of Columbus, that it all is going to become high-density um, development, we're going to, we're going to have an impact.
And I think, I mean, you raise some really good points, right? I mean, if you look at the actual Perry Township jurisdiction, it is definitely much less covered. But it's all of the past we've started.
Oh, it's a unique, it's because you got these two big pockets, right? We're in the hills of Brookside. Then you have all the, you know, all the scattered areas, and you're right, that's spread over, that, that presents a unique challenge because you have to have officers all the way up by basically Arlington.
Right.
And then you gotta have, you know, that officer's got to respond to something in Worthington Hills, and I'm guessing that's at least ten, twelve miles.
And now, that being said, I put it in there really as food for thought. So I, I think the, the thing to focus on is if you look at the current road building and you want to keep the level of service you have, but add that time that's necessary for uncommitted patrol time to balance things back out to where they should be. The, the numbers right now support two additional.
So as part of this, and maybe this is in the detail that comes with the, um, report, are there, I, are there, um, types of activity identified that maybe isn't something that is sustainable? Or the officers are, isn't something that is the best use of their time? And I don't mean in terms of sloppy work, that's not my, just to be very clear, that is not my suggestion. I mean, are they being called on and asked to do things that perhaps we should relook at?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question. And I think, you know, when, when I come back through the data, I mean, every community has to ask themselves what level of service would you want, right? I mean, there are communities out there who use a very traditional, we're going to build this staffing based on the number of actual phone calls. So again, like if you're in Detroit, for example, then you may have officers spending seventy percent of their time going to call, to call, to call, to call. And then the other third of the time is busy with whatever that non-enforcement order is, so there are no uncommitted at full-time. But that's the balance with bigger cities, and smaller communities tend, tend to have higher expectations of their departments. And so what I would tell you is there are a large number of those reactive and asynchronous kinds of calls. And like, for example, with your house and residence checks. But when you go back to the neighborhoods that are really specific that are doing them, and you look at the types of calls that are happening there along with all those checks, it's like, do you really want to pull away from that time they're spending there? We, you, you can make, obviously, you'll have to make your own decision, we recommend that you not do that. That you, the current work that they're doing really should be preserved. Now, that being said, if we look at this down the road, this, this can also be a little bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy, right? If reactive work is what builds your staffing, then you do more reactive work and it looks like you need more people even down the road. And so I think a future study like this would have to go back to this study and say, how much did we carve out for that kind of work? And use that same kind of base, because if you had two more people, then the, the understanding would be that there would be perhaps more of that responsive type of work, so we'd have to treat it a little bit differently. Uh, but we did look all the way through the data and it's, you know, again, it's like, how do you pick and choose where that comes from and?
So, um, the actual study itself.
Yes.
Okay. We, we will have the board look at that.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes, absolutely.
We're going to have that available to them. Um, there's a lot on the agenda over the next thirty days. But I think, I, I'd ask the chief if we could have you back virtually. I mean, so, I mean, you're more than happy to come, uh, in our first meeting in December, if that's what it turns out to be. Uh, or if your time, your schedule is not allowed, or we can have you virtually come in and kind of give us a refresher course. But I think we'd like for the board to kind of delve into the study a little bit more, try to get some more questions out there, uh, try to get answers. And, um, if the board has questions, they can run them through Chief Sisaro to you and try to get them all together, so you're not peppered by several people asking you different questions. So, um, but that's kind of the, the schedule we'd like to, to keep it.
Sounds good. It's probably, the written report will be two to three weeks out, so I ran that timeframe, and then I'm happy to come back at first. Actually, ten minutes from here, something like that, so.
That'd be great. Yeah, I think our first meeting in December is or, we're saying two to three weeks out, that'll see if the board, probably three weeks.
Holiday in there and.
Holiday in there, yeah.
So I'm standing, need some time.
Yeah.
So, that's good.
Any, any other questions you have, Steve, anything?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So I'll go by, I'll go by the quickest, how about this? For deputy, any updates?
I, just, you see, the, uh, they, uh, just offered a couple, uh, standard, very classes. Officer, you know.
How's everything at the jail?
Uh, they, yes, they have a lot coming in right now, I think they graduate next week. Uh, but I think we still need about sixty-five people to fully staff the jail before we can completely. Uh, that's way beyond my hating to give you. Because we're being recorded, so.
I hear Chief Summers looking for a part-time gig, maybe he'll come down and.
This is something I hear at both the Franklin County Chiefs meeting and Lincoln County Chiefs meeting, but it's just everybody's harder than ever.
Oh. Um, okay. December, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. So, um, you want to come on up and you will, you will update for our open fire and. Shout again, Dave, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to be here. Uh, Mike Bell, our assistant chief, is with me this evening, and I think you all met him already. Um, I think for this year, for Perry Township, we've had about a hundred runs uh, into your township, and I think twenty-one so far in the Hup County, well, some divisions. And I know recently we spoke with, um, Keith Bowleson, he called asking about some uh, guidance on A D D place. So he handled that this week, and, uh, probably been that. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, Eli, how you doing? Um, I'm about so far. Uh, Rose Superintendent, you want to give out a little precursor to what we have so far and?
Eli Moore is here from I A P, uh, to discuss their construction management processes. Well, something.
So, uh, start just giving you guys a little some history of, uh, why you guys and how long I've been there. Uh, I've built the company since twenty sixteen. Um, company was founded in the early, um, nineties. Uh, and in twenty fifteen, they were awarded the contract of the state of Ohio um, to do their, um, all the projects for all the state agencies as an owner's representative. Um, so essentially, I A P is a third-party administrator. Uh, and now since twenty nineteen, I do CIP program, uh, which operates under, um, NCPA, that's a national cooperative, first seen alliance. Um, we provide those services to different, uh, townships, uh, libraries, uh, any entity really that, that utilizes public funds. Um, the services we provide is that we become not just a project manager, but also your representative on that project. Um, and look after the interests of the owners. The way that we do that, the way the program works, is, uh, there is no upfront cost for, uh, the township for the entity that wants to use the program. Uh, they provide us with a task order. Um, once we receive that task order, we, uh, help you sign up with the NCPA, which you guys would have to become one of their partners in order to utilize our services. Um, once we do that, we develop a scope of work, um, with the person that's going to sign that project. Um, the goal of, um, developing that scope of work is to make sure that we develop one that's apples to apples. Um, because the next step that we do is that we publicize those, um, that scope of work and we bring it out to subcontractors um, that would fulfill that work. Uh, we do review those, um, proposals that are turned in prior to sending them back to you guys. Um, once we review them, we make sure that everything's apples to apples. Um, we then send you guys what's called a agency selection. Um, for the most part, what we do is that we send you the top three um, contractors that we believe to be, uh, competent and, and able to fulfill this work. Um, then we'll have a conversation with you guys and whoever's in charge of that project will then make a decision. Um, on that agency selection, you'll see our costs, which is a fee. We charge a thirteen percent fee for the services that we provide. Once we have a selection signed, that's the only time you're going to see a cost from us. Uh, and it'll be basically from start of the project all the way to completion. Um, my job of the project manager is to ensure that the project gets done for that scope of work. Uh, it's also to ensure that I collect any documentation that I need from that contractor, such as making sure that we do the permitting, making sure they're doing their, their data logs, uh, as well as, uh, depending on the size of the project, their prevailing wage documentation. Um, so once you guys have selected a contractor, a purchase order will be then written to I A P. I A P pays that subcontractor as the project is completed. Um, let's see, um, with my clients, I allow them to be as involved. Let's see, um, with my clients, I allow them to be as involved or as disconnected from the project as they like. Um, I work with a lot of different types of clients. I work with clients who know and understand construction. And we we're coming basically to take some of the load up on certain projects. Um, but I've also worked with um. For example, libraries uh, who may be disconnected from the project. And their only interest is just through the fulfillment of project and see the project completed. Um, we do make sure that we have, uh, we believe in this on a project once it's on construction. The reasoning behind this is to make sure that we're meeting the expectations of our clients. And that the contractors meeting those expectations as well. Um. And then we, at the conclusion of the project, we have a punch list. Um, we make sure that everything that's on your project is used. We have highly rights code for that project. I'll leave the couple of those strong with you guys. Um, over the past. Um, and then from with the state of Ohio, we completed roughly, I think we completed roughly six hundred and twelve projects. Uh, for different state agencies, starting with O D M R, D A S. Um, Department of Development of Disabilities, Medicaid. Um, all the major players in the state agencies. Um, and now with um, the contract that we used. Which is this N C B A, uh, we've done projects with many of the townships in the surrounding area. I just finished a firehouse with Jerome Township uh, over by forty two. Um. Done a lot of work. Um. I'm getting the name of um. Jefferson Township. We've done another salt farm for them. Um, and that's kind of how I heard of me and and what we what we provide. Um. Do a lot of libraries. Um, and essentially just provider services to become a a help. Um, or sometimes the overstaffed employees that you guys might have doing some of the. Um, a lot of work also at Orange Township um, right down the road, so.
So real quick and not interrupt. The the fee.
Yes.
Thirteen percent fee. So we're just gonna ask this to one minute. We'll just ask it. So uh, first of all, the thirteen percent is based upon what cost?
The cost of the product.
The overall cost of the project. When is that fee requested to be paid or presented over time or how does that work?
So we only invoice throughout the project, uh, four percent complete. And as we're invoicing, four percent complete, whatever our invoice is doing. Let's say the project's, you know, let's for sake, so. Making it easy. Say the fee was ten percent, the project was ten dollars. If I invoice um. Five dollars, I'm only invoicing five percent. Uh, I'm only invoicing ten percent of that for my fee. And you'll see that all on the on the same invoice. So it'll it'll only be percent complete of the project. Um, the way that we do our invoicing, we utilize a program called Procore. I'm sure you guys may be familiar with it. Um, but we manage the project as well as do all of our invoicing through Procore. The contractor can only invoice for material that's on site or we have physical possession of it. Uh, the other thing they can invoice is just the percentage of the work that's been completed. Um, the way we do that is that we develop a schedule of value. Uh, and on that schedule of value, they'll invoice the percentage that they're at. Um.
So can you, let's take Jefferson Township, uh, cause you did a salt farm.
Yes.
Can you walk us through that that project? Was that one of yours?
Yeah, that was one of my projects.
Okay. Can you walk us through that project? I mean, well, I, it may not be the same salt farm that worked.
Right.
But can you give us the milestones of?
Yeah, so they they reached out to I A P, submitted a task order. Uh, once they submitted that task order, I went there uh, to do an inspection of what they wanted done and have a discussion with them. Um, they had some drawings um, that were completed as an analysis. Uh, and then we grabbed those drawings and we looked drawings, we threw up a scope of work. I believe you guys received a copy of that scope of work. Um, and we get out that scope of work. Once it was awarded on that particular project, we had to request for the contractor to pull this price. So they get some of the funding. Um, and then once we did that, we started the project. Uh, how we started the project was we had a kickoff meeting. We discussed um. We discussed the project as well as discussed the times that they could work there. We had to.
Just was a kickoff meeting with the contractor?
Yeah, kickoff meeting with the contractor. Once that kickoff meeting started, he also provided us with a schedule. Uh, and then we began the project. Um, it did take them a little bit of time to get the. Um, canopy that they needed uh, to meet the spec that we required on this particular project. But once that canopy was received, they were able to begin the project. Um, and. Finished it, I believe it took them, we had some demo, a swell on this particular project. But I believe they were able to complete the project in, it's like, uh, almost eighteen weeks or so. Uh, from start breaking the ground to the installation of canopy and. Um, working through. So during that process, we did our site visits weekly. Um, they were very involved with this project. Uh, so they were there at every meeting that we had. Um, when we concluded the project.
Well, how um. My last question. Andy, you'll probably have twenty.
Oh, sorry.
Dude, so uh, while the project was ongoing. You were there once a week?
Yes.
Okay.
Un- unless unless there was something that came up that needed my assistance and needed me to be there.
To be there. Okay. So that contractor obviously had a contact or an individual in charge.
Yes.
On site.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so they they do have somebody on site that is the representative of that contractor there. Uh, in managing, you know, some for this particular project, they didn't hire any subs. Uh, but there are other projects where they have other subcontractors. Uh, and in that case, they would be managing them. Um, but the one thing that we require from them is that every day they put in their their um, daily logs on Procore. And that's what I use to make sure that basically the wheels aren't pulling off the wagon. To make sure that everything's going as planned. Um, and then once again, at that weekly meeting, we discuss um. What's been completed, we walk to site, make sure that we're getting the uh, prevailing wage for that particular project. Uh, the daily logs are also another tool that we use to ensure uh, that the daily logs are being done correctly. Since I'm not there every day. Um, because on their daily logs, they they list the individuals that are working there, what tasks were completed. Um, as well as a two week look ahead that we look at daily.
So um, question, so you said they had drawings?
Yes.
What level of the drawings were they?
Uh, they were essentially show drawings. They weren't specific for that building now.
No, they weren't specific?
No.
Okay, so when do you guys think and how much drawing information do you need to put a budget together? Like an overall, like, hey, we think it's gonna be about.
Yeah, so I I called that a conceptual estimate.
Right. And what's your contingency, like what contingency would you put on that at that level? Because what we have is we have a drawing that kind of shows the scope of the work. It kind of shows areas. It doesn't show the construction of the.
Yeah.
Actual salt barn, but it kind of shows, you know, what's demoed, how much, you know, concrete asphalt. Doesn't have the detail, you know, the the actual details, but how much information do you need to put a conceptual estimate together?
Uh, I think what you have would be sufficient.
Okay.
Um, I will put a contingency on there. I might be by a fifteen or twenty percent.
Okay.
Depending on how much information we have.
Yeah.
Obviously, the more information you have, the the more accurate we can be.
And then you're taking those scopes of work, like concrete. You're gonna take concrete, you're gonna go get three bids from concrete. Is that the way I understand it?
No, so on on this particular project, which SIP, we go to, we we try to get just one subcontractor. To give us a pricing for the complete scope.
Okay.
Um.
So like a general contractor, you're gonna get a general contractor and then they're gonna go out and get the quotes for the different scopes of work.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So um, you're gonna hire a general. Um. Are we gonna be able to see the difference, like concrete quote, the asphalt quote?
Yeah, we so depending on how we um. Depending on how we write the scope of work, you can ask them to write pricing on different uh, aspects of the project.
Yeah.
Um, so that that's something that we can certainly do.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying. So so you're gonna go.
Different trade.
Okay.
If you wanna see those numbers.
Yeah. So you're gonna hire a general, the general's gonna take care of all the subs, you know, all the different scopes of work. And then you're gonna take and you're putting a thirteen percent markup on the generals. Whatever the general contractors go.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm I'm not just going out there and picking one. I I have to make sure that I was a really some public funds. So I have to make sure that I meet all the requirements of the Ohio Vice Code. So we'll have to bid the project uh competitively.
Okay.
We do have a lot of contractors who bid a lot of our work.
Yeah.
Um, throughout the state of Ohio. But I also like to make sure that I reach out to local contractors.
Okay.
Uh, I come from a small town, so it's it's important for me to to see that. To see that, you know, the contractors that are in the area are also involved in the bidding process.
Okay, alright. Um, cause I think for us, it's like we we have to get our arms around like, cause we've seen it as high as. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to as low as, you know, one, one six, we're like, we're all over the.
Yes.
And I don't, I I wanna be basically get an understanding of what do we think and that's the reason why the contingency. It's like, if you're in fifteen to twenty percent contingency, which I think for the level of drawing we're at is reasonable.
Right.
But that's, you know, it's just kind of like, what are what are we talking about? And then as we get into the project and develop the the drawings for it, which. In some cases, the canopy guy has already developed his details that, you know, we can provide. That's what we're after is like. How much detail can we get to uncover the scope of the work?
No, absolutely. And I and I think that the beginning part of the project is where we can clarify that. We can build a Tashma Hall, or we could build a service, something that'll get the job done.
Right.
Uh, and depending on your budget, we can look at different systems. Um, there are different ways to build this thing, to do it. More cost effectively. Um, you you can use uh, boulders. Uh, in some cases, I did that for Jerome Township actually, uh, where we use boulders as the walls.
Oh, the concrete blocks?
Yeah. Uh, that can be cost savings versus pouring a wall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we we can look at different avenues and the purpose of of developing that scope of work is to make sure that. Contractor A, Contractor B, and Contractor C are all bidding on the same thing. You know, we don't have one contractor being an outlier over here. If he's an outlier, he's an outlier because of the cost he has on the project, but not because of the scope.
Yeah.
I I will leave um, this podcast, which it it does show some of the projects we've done. Uh, in the past and some of the entities we've worked with at I A P, so.
Okay.
So how, so Andy, how do we, we move this to the next?
Well, I I mean, I'd like for you to look at the drawings that we have.
Yeah.
Um, and basically say, okay, um, and and it's great that you did Jerome because it would be be great to see like. Um, you know, in the material, like you you're seeing costs right now.
Right.
You know, it it for us to get it, like, what do we think this is gonna cost based on, you know, the parameters that we have right now? We have some building demo, we've got some, you know, um. You know, we have the structure, we've already been working with the company, you know, that is kind of putting the structure together. So we have a price on that, you know.
Okay.
Like, hey, I think based on the, I got two other, you know, we got two other companies that could provide, you know, the the. Don't worry, we're just a little, we just wanna get the thing put together, understand what we're dealing with. Because there's also the financing aspect that we have to figure out as well.
Yeah, and and the the beauty of. How we do this as I A P is that we could get started on this project and I'll take the risk. If we get even to the point where we bid the project out and it comes over a budget that you guys can't afford. You guys have no cost, there's no charge from me. Until you decide to move forward with that project.
Okay.
There is no cost to you.
Okay. Um, so is that something that we can set up a meeting with you to kind of go over the whole scope? That all of a sudden we collected for this to this date?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So I can do me a favor and thinking of Mr. English's schedule and your eyes and try to get something within the next couple of weeks.
Definitely. I'll pass you guys my card as well.
Let's make sure that happens. Does anybody else have one in that meeting?
Um, well, probably Beth and um. So the, so question, let's uh, while we got this long. Um. What your guys' schedule look like this this Friday?
We have facilities meeting in the morning.
Yeah. And then what do you guys, like, I've got a. I've got a nine thirty to ten thirty, but I can do that remotely or I can move that. So I I can either meet in in the. I can meet anytime Friday after ten thirty.
I have a one to two um, about the health insurance. So that's kind of.
You, I can make myself available on Friday as soon as it's after ten or after nine, nine thirty or something.
You wanna, you wanna say, you wanna go um, eleven o'clock?
Sure. That'll work. That gives me plenty of time to get on the next one.
Yeah. What to do?
We started.
You wanna do it here or you wanna do?
We can do either, uh, we can do it here.
Okay.
Okay, I'll send out an invite.
Okay, then we'll, then if you can um, send that out, Beth.
I will.
And then uh, we'll just plan to meet here at eleven.
Alright, well, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Hey. So um, so I can be served all. Sony. How we doing?
Yeah. Um. Violation files thirteen sixty six Oak Barn, she had the big dead tree taken down this weekend. I was there today, took a picture of the little tiny stump that's left. Um, she still has a dead. Tree next to her driveway, smaller tree that I'd like her to get down. She had to move the car to get the dead tree out. So the car wasn't in the driveway, which means she had to clean the leaves off the car, moved into the street, so it looks better. Um, and she's really trying, she is, but with this big tree coming down, we're ma- we're making big progress, so.
So I wanna thank you because I honestly didn't think that that any of this would get done. I honestly thought we would be an environmental court dealing with an issue.
Now, her mom's back in the hospital and so I get a call every other day and you know how that is, but I mean, she's making good progress, so.
Good.
You know, we're giving her time.
Good.
Um, her side drive contractor did what we talked about on site. They got probably ninety five percent done of what I wanted them to do.
Yeah.
Um, they have invoiced the owner and the owner has not yet paid. I told them I could close the file for the end of page.
Yeah.
Third party invoice and he hasn't given me an answer on what his plans are with the truck. And then shipping container property. So I'm waiting to get an answer from him as to what he's gonna do this.
Go ahead.
Um. And then last week, we had the uh, board zoning appeals. We have three variants here. It's all three variances were unanimously approved. So we had a little party here and we have three, we have happy um, residents. And then next Wednesday, we have zoning commission to um. For the study, the overhaul of the the code and adding the uh, the uh, small solar code.
Who's who's gonna be a big commission here? It's a zoning mission.
Besides the commission?
Yes.
It's public, it's a public here.
No, I'm sorry. Is Pete or Jenny?
Neither. Neither is expected to be there. And unless unless the commission.
We probably need Jen there.
Okay.
Just to have her answer any questions and maybe.
But she could be available.
Even if.
Yeah, even if it's virtual.
Correct, yeah. Well, she, I mean, she should be.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I would, would have Andy go, but we're, you know, that's kind of frowned upon a little bit, board member there. So um, yeah, if Jen would be there.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you, sir. Anything you need?
Uh, no. Well, I just, with the with that magazine you're talking about coming out, I wouldn't. Well, I just, with the with that magazine you're talking about coming out, I wouldn't like to propose that zoning has an article in that magazine. That talks about things that need a permit, because I'm seeing a lot of things going on now that people don't know they need a permit for.
That's a good idea.
We could add to that.
I mean, normally, it's it's a it's a one-page article and eight and a half by eleven, but I I think we could, Luke could probably break it up. And maybe have two or three topics.
Just, yeah, just the one point.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's it.
Road Department. We were. I have a cell phone done. Go with that, uh it's an update on the generator. The contractor that. Generator systems use um MG Abbott came out to look at the scope work we needed. Um the original estimate for install on the the quote. Uh was thirty-two thousand. His book for install came back at thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety. I reached out to Brian Engel to see if he'd be interested in installing the new generator.
Yeah.
He came out, he's still working on pricing. With the pad, he is looking at options to use the existing pad. And just do a little concrete work, yeah, once it's out. I don't have his numbers yet for the install. He's still working on trying to get a firm number.
Okay. So is is, so the install part, is this? Is this the same install cost of, cuz when we approved it, it was like four, if I recall correctly, it was like forty-some thousand. For the generator and then it was one and two thousand for installation.
It was twenty-nine thousand for the generator and thirty-two for the install.
Okay, and we approved what, sixty, what was it, sixty-nine or something like that?
I think it was just right around sixty-two thousand.
So if is this, is, so are we approving this?
No, I'm just giving you.
Oh, you're recording us the update?
Uh but, yeah, but the installation's coming back for three thousand over, using MG Abbott. Which is to generator systems.
Okay.
Where we purchased it.
Right.
Uh uses. And on the quote, it was an estimated.
Yeah.
Install price.
Okay.
Thirty-two thousand.
Okay.
Brian Engel, he's on our lecture round here. Uh he's kind of familiar with what we had going on. That's why I reached out to him to see if he would be interested.
So potentially, you're looking at it's increment over and above what was previously approved.
Possibly.
Potentially.
You know what, Brian? Yeah. With MG Abbott, we would have to switch out the uh avenue pad deal. That is something I think the road department we can do after meeting with Brian.
What's it, so I am, what's it, what is, uh I I guess I'm still trying to understand, I mean, the same ways at a time. What what's the need for a concrete pad? It's like, I mean, understand that we're probably just, pro- this probably isn't gonna be the spot that it's gonna stay. So do we, I mean, I'm just like looking, is there a temporary way that we can put this thing down? Not put the cost and pour a pad? And just like, because, you know, again, with the facility thing that we're at. That may or may not be the spot, and I don't wanna put in the kind of cost, I mean, it's like. I I guess I'm trying to understand, like, do we have to lock this thing in?
It it does have to be mounted down.
Okay.
That, from what Brian was talking to me. Was out looking at it, I think it's part of the code, cuz this is all gonna have to be inspected, uh and we do have to fence the new one.
Okay.
Anytime we upgrade the change back there, we have to meet the code.
Chief Zimmer was just shaking his head, yeah.
So what's the overall dimension of that, like enclosure gonna be? Six by six. Of the generator?
Yeah.
It's uh maybe about four foot by nine, we do have it on site.
Okay.
Little garage.
But you were saying Brian's looking at using the existing pad?
Using the existing pad, we did some measuring, it it should work. We have to tear out some concrete to rework uh the conduit.
Right.
Wires coming in. But when when's Brian getting back? Hopefully this week, I just emailed the me, which is of the generators. Will be a gas, I should have something by our facilities meeting. They're looking at the design for our gas meter. There will be a funds to have that upgraded. There's a big ten days of design, and then waterworks, I had them come out and look at just running the gas lines. So I have the generator right now.
Yeah.
When we stepped into our house, there was just a gas line laying on top of the ground going over to the barbecue, maybe something like that, I'm sure that's fruit. Thank you, Phil, sir.
We have a gas line right there, uh the only problem is we did an inch and a quarter and it's an inch wide. Okay, we're just looking to have it switched out. I'll hopefully have a little more about it on Friday. But on the new business. We have the uh. City of Fort Worth. If you're not with uh city of Columbus and. I looked at a few other maps of the area, uh they were asking for help on a couple of streets. I agree that we said that we could handle taking meatlands, which is. Cut through between. Pressing the board approves that service contract. And Perry Township for.
Uh I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And then you guys have a um. The road salt and dry and purchase agreement for uh the city of Worlington. They've agreed to let us purchase salt from them this winter. Possible seventy-seven eighty-one, which is uh the same as what our swamp four G twenty-three, twenty-four contract is. Like your Google. It's the same. It is the same.
Okay. Uh I'll make that motion. Second vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And that's all I have. What is our uh iron helmet stock, will we get in initially? We usually do about a hundred and fifty, two hundred times is what we would order right now. Anything else? That's all I have. Leaf equipment is? Leaf equipment is running good, uh. We started our seventh round through both sides. Today, uh. Go for it, working on finishing up these six long. Ninety-one so far. And seven, so. So, yeah, so Mr. English, the trees don't.
Still green as green could be, hanging on there.
One.
Every year. It's the last one.
So, okay. Chief, do we have a fire and EMS report other than what Chief Zimmer's already given?
Do not.
Uh and you're up.
Uh enrolled business FOP and UU has been signed and agreed upon uh for the reimbursement uh that was brought before the board last meeting. And they don't lose the figures, you get inspired from this point forward. Uh done staffing study, and I believe we're going to do um executive session for the other.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh I do have one other thing that's not on the agenda, thanks to our tenants. Uh we have uh. I need approval for seven thousand eight hundred dollars from the art funds, right? Uh this is core part of our body cameras, and this will be a reimbursement, so we're paying for this. Two-mode roller, and then we can submit a reimbursement to the full seven thousand.
There's a reimbursement coming from you.
Uh through the state.
Okay.
Eight additional body cameras purchased.
Okay, to public safety.
Yes.
I'll make that motion. Second, oh, yeah, yeah.
All I have, thank you.
Man of ministry.
Oh, yeah. Let's see, uh nothing more on the ODOT right now, I have the package footage project, the Sid. Keith is working with one of the property owners, there's um, there's a. Another person that has an interest in one of those properties. So um a general warranty deed was presented, but it hadn't been completed yet. So that needs to be taken care of first, so that will be coming back. Probably next meeting, um to be finalized.
It's a family member.
It's a family member, yes. Uh the facilities meeting will be this Friday at eight AM. Um the health insurance, I have a meeting with Burnham Flowers in the afternoon on Friday to go over finalized numbers. And options, see the. Our um Dropbox is not, it's constantly getting full. And so we have sync tool that we use daily here at the office, so we're gonna be transitioning all the board information. Over to sync tool, and you'll be getting a link when all the information's in there emailed to you, okay? Um and then we'll close down Dropbox.
We'll be.
Can we get Mary to come back? Yeah.
You know.
He got turned on all by himself today, he he was very, very good. He did an excellent job.
And the bar is.
Right.
So all that will be transferred from Dropbox over.
Correct, correct, and like I said, you'll get a link, so you should be able to just click on it and go right straight to it. Um Luke's gonna be assisting me with that process. Yeah, if you need help, call Luke. Yeah, he fixes everything. Um we've made the switch over to the zoning merchant program, um it went live on Friday, it's been working great. Um so nicely that. Luke is going to eventually switch the special event applications over to it as well, so we can get rid of square up and and um. Yeah, so that that was very quick, easy process, and I thank Luke a lot for for assisting with that. Let's see, you might have seen, I lay down here, um this, Tim Conkles been putting. Uh notifications up on his LinkedIn about um the open position at Perry Township. He and Luke got together and made what I thought was a very. Nice professional ad um that we've got posted here that would be sharing uh the QR code takes. Um anyone interested, straight to the application and um that sort of thing, so uh. Uh kudos to Mike and Luke for all their work on that. And um. Just uh with issue two around the corner, just to be safe, I contacted um Brochuson's. Office to see if our current policy with marijuana would change, and they assure me that it will not. Um the board still has full say as to who can come to work. With marijuana and who can't, so Steve, you are out of luck.
I have to stick with the bourbon, or stick with the bourbon, right, oh, COVID kind of messed that up for you then, right, so.
Um and I.
Should come to our meetings more often.
Yeah. Yeah, daytime meetings even more fun, so. Uh so in case, that is, that's, oh, I did wanna say that uh the. The financials for the police department were put into Dropbox, so uh road will hit tomorrow. Okay, so um uh road will hit it tomorrow and general. Um will follow soon after, uh we're we did get the process started working very, very, very beginning process of the new accounting program. Um but we're starting to get those ducks in a row to move forward with that, which it's been a long time since I've dealt with UAN. It's worse than dial-up, I think, and so I cannot wait to get to a different program. And that's all I have.
Can remind me how much, how many years back at UAN did we? Two?
Five, total of five, yours will be transferred over.
And then we're gonna run in parallel for.
Yes.
Period of time to make sure.
Correct, so.
Any questions over the Brookside here at Drive?
Yes. We have our meeting tomorrow night, so we'll.
Okay, yeah.
We just signed the contract with the the state provider, so.
We canceled seventy-eight hundred bits for three years, so we're not gonna pay out the full disclosure.
Uh any questions of the administrator? None. This law.
Must imagine.
Yes, yes. We get a motion too? Oh, did you?
I said I request a.
Request a motion.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Uh anything else that'll go to the order, we'll go in executive session. None, uh I moved to enter into executive session with legal counsel concerning disputes involving township. There are a subject of pending and imminent court action. And to discuss police department personnel matters by a little poll vote.
Mr. Jenny?
Yes.
Mr. Englund?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes. Okay, five-minute break.